Okay, all right. Welcome to the Plan and Zone Commission for June 21st. Can I have the roll call, please?
Gibson.
Here.
Tapper.
Here.
Ormsby. Satterfield.
Here.
Stoltenberg.
Here.
Windland.
Here. Okay, we had minutes from the meeting from May 17th.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of the May 17th minutes as submitted.
That's excellent. Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the meetings from May 17th, 2023. All those in favor say aye.
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 Bose, same sign. Okay, the minutes are approved. So again, welcome to the Plan and Zone Commission for June 21st, the longest day of the year. This is always my depressing day because then they start getting shorter after this. Hard to believe we're there already. We are a appointed body by the city council and the mayor to review matters of site plans and zoning and such. We are a recommending body. So our decisions go to the council with a recommendation, not a final decision. We have, I think, five or six active cases with us today. If you have input on one of the cases, I'll recognize you back at the podium on my right and your left, and we would love to have your input. The seats up front are actually cheaper, so you guys in the back have to pay more for sitting back there, but if you want to stay back there, that's okay. But with that, we will begin. Okay, Taylor.
Thank you, Chairman. First case on the agenda tonight, case 23-42, Site Development Plan for 4323 Ontario Drive. The applicant is Windmill Design Build. This is Lot 8, Shops of the Woodlands. So this is on Pine Creek Lane and Ontario Drive in Shops of the Woodlands. The development proposes one financial services and general office building, future home of a Northwestern Mutual office. The area is shown and designated as urban medium intensity on the future land use map. It's also surrounded by the same designation. The proposal is consistent with uses and the character envisioned in the UMI area. The current zoning is C1 neighborhood commercial. The proposed use is permitted in this district. I will note there is an existing berm located on the south lot line of this lot, screening the to be developed R2 single-family residential area subdivision to the south. Onto the site plan, we have one building running east-west, located in the south part of the lot. There is one dumpster shown located on the east side of the parking lot near the southeast side of the building. It's accessed via, right by the curb cut of Pine Creek Lane. Curb cuts are shown on Pine Creek Lane and Ontario Drive. These access points align with existing curb cuts of existing developments across the street of Ontario Drive and likewise Pine Creek Lane. A sidewalk is shown on Ontario Drive and Pine Creek Lane. There's also crosswalks shown connecting to the east, going across Pine Creek Lane, with ADA ramps. A total of 43 parking spaces are provided with two, that includes two ADA parking spaces. This meets the code requirements for this use and size. A stormwater retention area is located west of the building and parking lot, so shown And I have some renderings submitted by the applicant. Here's a rendering of the south elevation, also a floor plan, so lots of offices on the exterior, the waiting room, some cubicles in the center, and some additional renderings of the proposed building, brick facade, dark roof. Staff contends the proposed development meets site development standards and code requirements. Staff is recommending approval of the site development plan. I can take any questions.
All right, thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. Mark, anything since the presentation or publication from your standpoint?
Nothing.
All right, thank you. Questions and comments from the commission on this matter? And Lynn online?
No, Roy. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, message of silence. Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope. All right, we'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case 23042, Site Development Plan, subject to staff recommendations.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 23-042, Site Development Plan for 4323 Ontario Drive. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Bose, same sign. Okay, 23042 is recommended for approval. All right, Taylor?
Thank you, Chairman. Next case on the agenda is case 23-44. This is a final plat, a replat of Forest Green subdivision. This is named Forest Green Second Edition. As you may recall, this is located on Forest Grove Drive, the intersection of Forest Grove Drive and Chriswell Street. The applicant is Chris McNamara of McNamara Construction. The original plat proposed a mixture of single-family units or lots and townhouse lots. The applicant is just requesting to phase the construction of the subdivision, which is requiring this replat. The original plat composed or platted the whole area, so it showed all lots, all streets, et cetera. This original plat was approved by this body, case 22-45, and approved by city council on August 2nd, 2022. A total of 57 developer lots and two outlots are shown on the original plat. The proposed plat, Forest Green Second Edition, shows it's just a phase or a portion of the original plat. No material changes have been made from the original concept, and the plat meets all code requirements for access, fire access, given the 22 lots shown. The original stormwater detention design will be built to accommodate the development, and that's located in the southeast corner. Each phase is then required, each additional phase is required to meet minimum subdivision ordinance standards as mentioned, so we're looking at number of access points for fire and all the above. But I want to reiterate, there's no material changes. This is exactly as shown as the original plat, just one phase of it. Given that, staff recommends approval of the final plat for Forest Green Second Edition, and I can take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Taylor. Mark, anything since publication?
Nope. It's exactly the same as it came through, just a smaller piece.
Yep, all right. I'll come to the commission then with any questions or comments.
I do have one question.
Yeah.
Taylor, with this parcel being developed as it is, what is the in-and-out connectivity? So there is no connectivity to the south? Will there be?
So currently, we had a lot of developments were approved in this area of town in the last year. To the south is the Lady of Our Lords, the church and the school. If that area of the church were to be developed in a fashion that would have some connectivity, that road would connect. If not, there is a plat note that requires the driveways of Lot 12 and Lot 13 to be built to a standard, I believe it's six inches, to a thickness that our trucks, our service trucks can back in and out of those driveways, and that's shown on the plat.
So how is the end of that street going to be treated right now? Is it going to be a hammerhead? Is it just going to be a fence and it ends?
Correct. It'll be as shown. There will be no hammerhead, so you'll have, once those lots are developed, there'll be driveways, or if at least one driveway, the Lot 13 has the option of going north or west, and that would be the turnaround. So it'd only be, and Brent can explain on that a little more.
Yeah, and so our policy has always been, if it's two or less lots for the dead end, that we don't necessarily require the temporary turnaround in terms of the larger for snow removal and garbage. This has been the option if you have less than that. So we've done this in probably three subdivisions in the last five years that I can think of. Most likely, this will not go through. If the use that Our Lady of Lords and St. John Vianney developed, that they're planning to, this could sit as a dead end for a long time.
Okay.
But we did want to give ourselves that potential connection in the future in the event that they choose to sell off part of that property that they acquired.
And so having that east-westbound street stubbed out there, does that give city vehicles a way to turn around?
It actually does really help, yes. And as Taylor stated in his presentation, when they hit their, the threshold for the number of lots that would require additional fire access, then either a subsequent phase would have to be built as part of that, or at a minimum, they'd have to do a temporary fire lane out to Forest Grove, or I'm sorry, out to Chriswell.
Okay. All right, thank you.
That's like was done out off of Forest Grove.
Correct.
On the west side of town, okay. So the notice to the future purchasers is really via the plat note, as far as, hey, by the way, if it ends up the way it looks, you could have a turnaround in your driveway with dump trucks and...
And that's only if, if our vehicles felt the need to do that. With that street being, the east-west street being that close.
Close.
I would imagine we probably won't use it.
Yeah. And snow removal, they, I mean typically you just plow that to the end, but technically they can't drop it on the church's property.
There's a little bit of right-of-way left through there, and we could always work something out with the church to do so.
All right.
It's also mentioned on there for future, if the church does sell the property, that those homeowners are kind of on notice that something could be built over there.
Yep.
Which we've run into so many times.
Right.
Yeah, with a potential dead end versus a permanent dead end.
Yeah.
Now, this plat was before we did the church, so it's kind of the order of things was, yeah.
Yep. Anyone else in the commission? Lynn, anything for you online?
No, I'm good, Roy. Thank you.
Anyone in the audience with regard to this? Yes, sir.
My name's Joel Deutsch, and I have a couple objections to the final plat. First one, there's a corner lot, and I don't think the city Planning and Zoning Department took into consideration the vision clearance required under the Act.
Joel, could you get just, yeah, just a little closer to the mic? We're having a little trouble.
I don't think they took into, I'm sorry. I don't think they took into consideration in reviewing this final plat, 11B12J1. In regards to the way I read the final plat, making the berm will go to almost the sidewalk and then the street, and under the Bentendorf ordinance, they have to have two points, measured 35 equidistant from the street corner, and that is not, that is not shown on the final plat, and I think it should be based upon Bentendorf ordinance. Secondly, there are sidewalks required in this subdivision. Now, Bentendorf does not have anything requiring ADA sidewalks, but the state of Iowa does, and as far as I know, Bentendorf has not opted out of anything, and there's nothing in this final plat showing that those sidewalks have to be ADA compliant, and I think this commission has that power to insert that those sidewalks be ADA compliant. Third objection is in regards to access to the subdivision, and as far as I'm concerned, the Planning and Zoning Department has never considered the taxpayers of the city and the requirement for rebuilding those crosswalks, et cetera. Why should a taxpayer be required when the subdivision developers, the one who caused the requirement for those sidewalks to be reconfigured, and I don't know who's going to pay in the original argument in regards to this matter, there was some question about how access to this subdivision and children heading to the school across the street that there was going to be the directional signal that was down the street was going to be moved. And I don't believe that the taxpayers of the city should be required to pay those particular costs, and this commission, I think, can put into the final plat that the reconfiguration of that corner caused by the subdivision development should be borne by the developer. The fourth, fourth objection I have is in regards to, there's not, there's not a requirement that this commission saw that a sidewalk should be on Forest Grove. This is a safety issue. Yes, there is no sidewalk on the subdivision next door, but this is not a residential street. This is a busy street, and if you were out there, especially when school is in session, you will notice that those sidewalks are vital, and I think this commission, and this planning commission, should have considered the safety of those children and required that sidewalks be put in by the developer on Forest Grove. Those are the objections I have.
Thank you, Joel. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name's Paul Van Horst, and I live at 18921 Chriswell Street, and I also, I own the property at 19125 Chriswell Street, and for that development there on Chriswell and Forest Grove on that corner, that retention pond that they built, well, it doesn't work. I stood up here last year, last fall, when they had the rezoning for it, and I said, this will not work, because all that water comes down into my property and down through, well, we own about a half mile of waterway. It cannot handle it. They've been, back on April 3rd, the developer started pumping, had a generator there, was pumping water out of the retention pond, which all flows down across underneath Chriswell into my property. That went on for five days. I contacted the city, they said they would look into it. Then on May 7th, we had a simple, so I allowed it, he was in a bind, he's like, yeah, you can go ahead and pump. I understood his situation, and so then I thought something was going to get done. Then on May 7th, we had just a nice two-inch rain. It lasted about five hours. Well, the retention pond overflowed, went over the silt fence, and comes all down into my property, and I know you're probably all aware of it because I've been talking to the city, so I'm sure they pass it all on to you. So something's got to be done. This retention pond needs to be moved, and I've contacted the DNR, and you cannot pump water out, like, out of a retention pond, and you cannot allow a retention pond to overflow. And then when they developed that, did that site work there, they changed the original waterway. Well, if you look at the Clean Water Act, and if you read in like chapter 468, I've spent a lot of time on this, when you change the waterway, the downflow guy doesn't have a lot of rights, but when the upflow guy changes things, then that gives the downflow guy a lot of, he's got some, something to stand on. So I think before you allow anything, before they, we don't even have streets in, sidewalks, roofs, sump pumps running, all this water's coming down to me, and nothing's being done about it now, and we do, and like I said, there's no streets, storm drains, or anything yet. And there's a culvert on that property just to, that I own at 19125, there down on the lower right. All that water comes across Suzie Van Horst there, that farm to the south, and that comes through. Well, I've been mowing grass up there for 40 years, and that culvert, I weeded around it every couple of weeks. It, maybe after a rain, there's a couple, three inches of water in it. Now, that culvert is laying half-full of water because of all the sediment that's come through there. They put silt bags on there to slow the water down, but it doesn't stop the mud. Now, it's all sealed it in there. It's like a peninsula there. So before you approve anything there, I'm not done with this. If this does get approved, there'll be, I'm going to have to do something because it's just wrecking my property. So thank you for hearing me out.
Yeah, no, thank you, Paul. And we had not, I had not heard about the issues relative to the drainage that may be created, and we'll ask Brent, city engineer, to give us some feedback on some of the things you've said, as well as what Joel said. We'll respond to both of those.
Yeah, I can't, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. I'd rather just wait till the end, Roy, and go through all the items.
All right.
Something else.
Yeah, I had to postpone the farmer to go in because he couldn't get through the waterway to even get to the field, so it's just, and this, and I know it's going to stop, and it's going to dry up, and he's going to be able to get in there, but once you get all these streets in and these sump pumps running and sprinklers going out in the yard, and they put a tile in there now, they buried it in, so there's nothing to stop, it's just like an overflow that they got going through the silt bags. The silt bags never get changed out. If they were doing any good, if they were stopping the mud, they would have to change them out every couple, three times a day. They don't ever get changed. I've been writing, I've been documenting, documenting everything, and it's just, it's just a mess. So I hope something gets done before I have to do something.
Okay, appreciate it.
Okay.
Yep. Anyone else in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope? Okay.
Do you have a list, Roy? Where do you want to start?
Well, we had, we had four items.
Writing them down, yep.
Four items from Joel. One, I think, was a legal matter referencing the code. I'm going to look at Chris for 11B12J1, the ADA compliant question. I might look at you.
Yeah, we cannot build anything that is non, you cannot exempt out of the ADA Act. So all of our sidewalks, all of our construction plans are all done per the federal ADA code.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are those shown on the individual site plans for each one of the properties?
They're shown on the construction plans. They would not be something that would ever be shown on a final plan, correct.
Okay.
I think that's one of the things we're talking about, site plan, we're talking about future site plans before you today is a replat of a certain portion.
Of it, right.
Of it, so keep that in mind. These issues need to be addressed, but when they get addressed is part of the question.
Yep.
And I will note that the proposed replat is only showing single-family detached lots, so no site plan will be required for this portion of the development. Farther east, this is, you have the original plat on the screen, these larger lots will have townhomes, and they will require a site plan.
And the commercial corner.
And the, well, that's actually still ag, but reserved for commercial, yeah, any, but single-family and duplex lots do not require a site plan.
Did you have anything regarding that code reference, Chris?
Sure. You know, I mean, I think the, I think it's really more of a planning issue. I think probably Brent would be better able to answer it.
I would probably say, Roy, almost all four of Mr. Deutsch's questions, the answer is simply that that is not something that would ever be shown on a final plat. So a final plat is simply the legal document delineating the lots, easements, that's it. So, so his question regarding the site triangle, for example, one that's mandated by city code, so there's no reason to show that, but that is also something that obviously gets evaluated during our construction plans. So we have a full set of construction plans. They've been reviewed and approved through my, through my staff, through Brian Freeze, our assistant city engineer. I just pulled them up. All the sidewalk crossings are identified, all the ADA truncated domes, everything is done. The question regarding the sidewalk crossing on Forest Grove over to Sterling Woods, they are responsible for building the sidewalk connection across, and that does include the rapid flash beacons that we did discuss. The developer is responsible for that. What was the other item?
ADA, the code, access in the berm.
The berm.
Well, the berm, the berm would just be tapered so it's not into the site triangle.
Site, right.
Correct.
It's obscure.
Are they responsible for the entire crosswalk?
Again, we'll, we'll respond to the chairman if called.
Yeah, yeah. Joel, if you want to do it, we're going to catch you back at the podium so we catch it on the record.
They're up here, so yes, Mr. Deutsch, they would be.
For the record, they are responsible for both sides of the street for reconstruction.
Correct, yep. I'm looking right at the plan right now, and it's all shown on there.
And then for the traffic signal?
It'll be the flashing beacons.
Okay.
Yeah. Similar to what is currently at Forest Grove Park.
Thank you.
Good, thank you. And then regarding the detention pond or retention pond and the drainage issues we're experiencing?
Yes, so Rob Depover, my erosion and sediment control technician, is very aware and has, I think, talked to Mr. Van Horst quite a bit, and may have talked with Brian Freeze as well, who handles our development. First thing to keep in mind is that basin is not complete. So the grading is complete, but I think Chris, as the engineer, can you confirm? I don't believe the outlet structure has been built yet. So it's just holding water right now. So they are allowed by our code to start grading at their own risk, which they did prior to construction plans being permitted, so they, they did what they're supposed to. They dig the pond first, and as they've graded the subdivision, now we have an approved set of construction plans. They're running sanitary sewer, the storm sewer may have already started, but that pond is doing what it's doing. It's collecting the runoff, but it does not have the outlet pipe out of it yet, so...
That's why they were pumping it out, because there was no outlet?
And that's also why, unfortunately, why it has overflowed, because it's designed as a dry basin. That will not be a wet pond. So that whole volume that's currently being taken up is because they haven't finished, they didn't have their approved construction plans. They couldn't put that pipe that goes from the basin to the Chriswell ditch, that pipe's not installed yet. So there is no way to drain that pond other than to pump it right now. So that's the reason it's sitting full right now. They will, once they get to, and I guess I'm going to ask Chris or Chris to comment on construction schedule if you can, and when they're going to get to that point, but that's why it's sitting full right now and has occasionally overflowed.
Okay, yeah.
So all that water, it's, so it's still going to come down to me, then?
Yes, that will have to be discharged into a, it will be a dry basin at some point when they get to that pipe and that outlet control structure.
Where, so on that outlet, then where's that, you said that outlet is going where?
That outlet goes to the Chriswell ditch.
Right, and where does that go?
That does drain down through the east to your property.
Yes.
Yep.
There was a engineer here, and after I got up and spoke, and I went back and sat down, and he got up and spoke, and he happened to be sitting next to me, and he goes, don't worry, there won't be any water coming down your way. And that's what he said here that night, that there won't be any water. And I was like, well, where are they going to go with it?
Yeah, that, that I don't remember, sir, that he would have said that. That honestly doesn't make any sense, he would have told you that. But so there, our city code is not based on, on volume of water. Our stormwater ordinance is based on a runoff rate, so it's a cubic feet per second is the quantity. So as long as they don't exceed what was coming to that point with what's going to be, so the, the new development, then they're in compliance with city code. So they, that outlet control structure has a small pipe, for example, on the pond side that will essentially meter that water and then discharge out onto the ditch that will then eventually work its way down through the drainage way.
Okay.
Chris, did you have any input or?
I don't know where they're at right now. Heather, Chris Townsend, Townsend Engineering. I'm not sure if I was the engineer that said that, but I don't think I would have said that because I knew we designed it, and there obviously is going to be water coming through there. There's just no getting around it. But we did have to provide calculations, like Brent said, that proves that we're, will reduce the amount of water that goes into that ditch, so, and like he was saying, that has not been installed yet. So that will end up happening here soon. The sanitary sewer, I think, is almost all, all the way in, so we'll be staking that out soon and getting the storm sewer in, and that will, should solve all, most of the problems. We need to get it established. There's a lot of things that aren't happening, you know, with this weather and different things, so.
So the pumping out, Chris, that was happening, that, I'm asking, would that have come out at a higher rate than the eventually designed?
Certainly, I'm sure they pumped it as quickly as they could.
Yeah.
Right.
So that was an event that was extraordinary as far as the volume of water, time period, versus what it's designed to do in its completed state?
Right, and that rain event we had, I mean, I witnessed it everywhere, that thing, I mean, that was probably the last time it rained, truthfully, of any amount, and that was, that was intense. That was an intense rain. There was, there were detention basins all over town, established ones having issues, so that was just bad, bad timing for that with our pond not having an outlet being full of water, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else with regard to this case? Nope, all right, come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 23-044, subject to staff recommendations.
One second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 23-044. I'll just ask any further discussion on the motion or second. Nope, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bose, same sign. Okay, thank you. Case 23-044. Nope, okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Okay, thank you. Case 23-044 is recommended for approval. Okay, are we switching? And Brent, I'm assuming we'll continue conversations and monitoring of the drainage?
Yeah, we're very aware. It's, unfortunately, we see this in darn near every subdivision that gets built. Construction, especially larger construction like this, and the fact that this one's been a little delayed while they were getting the plans approved, you see this downstream. Silt migrates no matter what you do, until you get the subdivision built and you get stabilization, you're going to see that. And unfortunately, this does meet city code.
Does, does the water follow the same ultimate path that it did originally?
Ultimately, yes.
Yeah.
It, it, there is a bit of a split right now, so there was a change. You're getting, he is getting, Mr. Van Horse is not wrong, he is getting a little bit of higher volume. But again, our code is not volume-based, it's quantity-based, or flow rate-based, I should say, not quantity. So yes, it, it splits and then ultimately kind of downstream of his property is where it comes back together. So we see this on, under every subdivision. Unfortunately, if it's got multiple drainage ways, you can't always make that work to meet our code in terms of street realignments, you know, the grading that you want to do for that and keep every square inch of property going the same direction. It's just not physically possible.
But relative to his comments on the Clean Water Act and that the upstream didn't really change, it didn't, there's not new water introduced to the site that didn't come across before, there's some changes on how it's coming across, but it-
He's getting a, a larger volume and his drainage area did slightly increase. But again, these, when you're talking Clean Water Act, these aren't waters of the US. These are farm, man-made farm fields and farm drainage ways, these are not-
These are non-navigable, not waters of the US, yes, sir.
Waters of the US to where any of that would apply.
Right, yep, all right, thank you, appreciate it.
Can, can I ask a question? So if I said what I heard you say, Brent, just now, a different way, it would be that when we have development, it's unfortunate for the adjoining property owners that there are things that occur during the time of development-
During construction.
-that, that we can't do anything about. There's no way to mitigate that to protect the adjoining property owners.
No, no. We have, we have our MPDS program, we have our MS4, Rob is out there, they've been doing, placing all their erosion control, but the simple matter is when he's talking silt, you will have silt loss. At some point, you will have silt that'll migrate off a site. You could blanket that site with erosion control measures, but you're still going to see some migration of that. So if he's talking that there's a culvert that's got a little bit of silt, that's going to happen. It's basically physically impossible to keep all of that out there. The amount of water, however, is just the end result of the project. So again, it's, there's an increase in volume, and anybody downstream of a project that gets developed sees an increase in volume because we don't require and we can't require with our soils that you infiltrate that extra water.
Mm-hmm.
So the, the water that's being generated by the rooftops and the roads, we don't have the soils that can infiltrate those. Our soils swell, you know, we don't have sand to be able to do that. So anybody that lives downstream of something that gets developed gets more water in terms of the volume. But the way our code reads is to prevent damage, you have to make sure that it's not moving any faster off your property. So that's the whole point of detention, right? Is that it fills up, so that way we don't get those flash floods downstream.
Right.
You still get more water. That, that pond's going to take a while to drain, and that's literally every single basin that we build, but you meter that rate with that outlet control structure.
But in this case, and in many cases, during the process, when the retention area isn't complete, there is no way to do that because not everything is in place yet.
And what they're actually doing i- is much more beneficial right now because they're not discharging from the site.
Right.
So all of their water is going to that pond, and if you drive by it right now, that pond is full. And we haven't had rain, measurable rain in eight weeks. That pond, or that basin is still full. So he's not getting any of that water on his property right now, other than when they had to de-water to try to do some work. So they will have to de-water that whole basin to build that pipe. And at that point, that would be like a rainfall event that we'll have to make sure that they're, we're not going to go out and measure what the CFS coming off a generator for a day is going to be, but we'll make sure that they're protecting it on the downstream end. But right now, there's no water leaving his site, or leaving this site, I'm sorry, and hitting Mr. Van Horse because there's no pipe out of that pond.
No way for it to leave.
Nope, it's, it's completely full right now if you drive by and see it.
But when that pipes in and construction's complete, no more water volume will enter his drainage field, if you will, or field of drainage?
He'll, he'll get more volume.
More volume over a period of time, but at a rate. The rate will not increase.
Not change, that's how we, that is detention. That is literally the, the crux of stormwater detention.
So in a given hour, you won't get any more than you ever did before for a given rainfall.
Correct, but you, you may get, you may get runoff for 24 to 36 hours, whereas before it was five hours.
For a longer period of time.
Yep.
And the water will follow the same path it was following unless downstream, somebody changes something downstream.
Yeah.
So if it was going through a creek bed or a swale downstream, it's going to go through that creek bed or swale downstream. If somebody interrupts that, changes it, curbs it, same process kind of takes place.
Sure, all right, I appreciate the additional insight.
I got, I got one question.
Yeah.
Is the ditch considered his property or is that actually in the right of way?
No, it's city right of way.
So he's not really seeing any additional water across his property?
It, it enters what, the way this one works, and eventually this will also be improved because we'll be able to build storm sewers along Criswell, but right now we have the ditch. So it leaves the Forest Green property into the west ditch of Criswell, travels, travels down Criswell for a short period, then crosses over and-
Under?
Under Criswell and then also under Mr. Van Horse's driveway, and then heads down the drainage way that kind of runs through the center of their property.
Is the developer required to clean out that culvert?
If there is a culvert that's clogged, then yes, they would need to.
I don't think any farmer's going to complain about the black dirt being marched onto their property, but the culvert could be an issue.
Yeah, if the culvert is indeed clogged.
Yeah, okay. Greg, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, we are revisiting Lot 1, Creek Ridge Estates, 30th addition. There was some quandary as to whether or not the townhouses were going to be two or three stories, so we will revisit this and essentially clear that up. This is aerial photo showing the site, and this is State Street right here, 39th, and then you come up and you've got Creek Hill Drive right here, and this is the parcel in question. There are 18 townhouses proposed for this locale. This is a, an R5 high-density multifamily residence district zoning designation on this parcel. Maximum height could be 10 stories or 150 feet. If someone had the financial wherewithal to build such a structure, that's the extent by which they could go. And everything around here is either one of two classes of zoning, either it's C3 general business district north of State Street, or it is R5, again, high-density multifamily residence district. Future land use pretty much goes along these same lines. We have urban high intensity, which permits this R5 use. It's anticipated for this area, and the commercial, community commercial down below is for R3. The townhouses, as they are configured at present, would meet the standards for an R4 classification for zoning. The site was plotted already. This is the lot of record right here. This lot over here, Lot 2, is currently occupied with the duplex structure. We've had an updated site plan showing the parking, since this was an issue brought up last time. This is the island, and these are the parking spaces that have been provided by the developer. And then we still have the same parking arrangement we had before with each of these units. So we've got these parking spaces all being added, providing a total that is above what is required for these structures. Just to give you an idea, again, the height, the very height of these is 35 feet, and we measure from the midpoint of the gable, so in essence, under our code, these are below 35 feet, these three-story structures. As we go to the landscape plan that has not changed, that will still be in play, and a comparison, and this is the older slide, understandably, but a comparison to show what was intended for this site, very much what was there previously or has been built here and here. You've got four-story structures with a greater density than what the developer is proposing. If we go here, we see these structures and their height as they were built out in a number of areas already versus what the petitioner is proposing here. Staff are looking at this, and now that we've clarified that these will be three-story townhouses that are permitted under the existing R5 zoning, to clarify that, that that will be the standard that will be here proposed by the developer. Conditions here are listed in the report. We recommend approval, given the clarification now that these will be three-story, not two-story townhouses. I would ask, are there any questions?
All right, thank you, Greg. Mark, anything else to add?
Just a kind of clarification on how we got here. So as we, as we discussed as a team, this project after the meeting and went back and watched the, the tape or the recording, we thought there was some ambiguity, and we wanted to make sure that you knew we were talking about three stories, not two. So we brought it back to you today to clarify that and get your approval or your vote either way, I guess. I think Mr. Beck pointed out, it does not change the parking calculation. The required parking is still met or exceeded. They did provide a new slide that's here today, it was not in your packet, I apologize for that, that does show the additional parking on the island. I think that's in there as kind of angled parking. So then we're, we're mitigating that parking issue, which is one of the things that was in our control. We had a lot of questions that we were going through last time we talked about this, I'm kind of glad we get to come back to it. But the things that weren't in our control were parking, and I think we've done a good job with the developer to address that parking issue.
I would agree, yeah. That was a big improvement because it, there weren't a lot of things that we could fix per se, but that one was addressable, and I think, to me, the solution looks tremendously better than what we had before, so thank you. Questions and comments from the commission on this one?
No, I appreciate the additional parking. We, we can't fix the street issue or the traffic on the street or the corner. Well, some of it was going to get fixed, but additional parking's good.
Brent, were you going to look at some, or, or have patrol look at some of the parking, no parking areas? Was there any development on that?
Not yet. The PD's been there, but we will.
All right.
We're, we're pretty certain that we will be doing some additional no parking right at that curve.
Okay, makes sense.
We did have a tree company, that was another thing that got brought up, some overhanging limbs at the, the corner. Turned out to be city property. We did have a tree company, at least has it on their schedule if they haven't completed it yet. About there and turn back about 15 feet through the entire property.
Good, good. All right, anyone else in the commission? No? Lynn?
No, one of the commissioners just asked the question that I was thinking about, and this is the one-way-in, one-way-out issue that we can't address. It's same case, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I don't have anything, it's been addressed, answered, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone in the audience with regard to this case?
My name is Frank Marari. I was adhered to the prior meetings. It was supposed to be two stories, now it's changed to three. And I did ask the committee to check into it because there's just one way in and one way out. Can you ask the developer to add a street to it before you give them an okay to build?
I'm not sure. Tell me a little more what you mean, add a street to it?
Add a street to the development right there, so there'll be more than just one way in and one way out. That's all we have right now, and it's a lot of traffic already. And I don't know if the committee went and checked on the site or not, but it would be nice to have an extra entrance, so would be no extent, whatever's violent extent or calm extents. A lot of things could happen when people get stuck.
So Brent, do you know what?
Yeah, so I, I think he's asking, basically Greg's got the image there, is if there would be a way to provide a second connection down to State Street. Unfortunately, there's not because that's all private property. The city does not have any right of way through there.
And the grade's a pretty substantial difference, isn't it? I mean, the grade-
That too, but you can see it's fully developed through there.
Is that what you mean? Is it Frank?
I mean that he has to have an, an entrance, an extra entrance. Have another street, that they can put another street somewhere.
Down off State Street, or where, where would you be thinking that would be?
Come off of State Street, that's the only place could come off of it.
And that, that's not possible.
Yeah, that's, that's not possible. They, those are all privately owned properties along there, so there's nowhere to put a street right of way or acquire right of way.
Okay, for this is not possible, you know what's going, you know, the congestion is going to be there. Why it's allowed to do that? Why don't allow to something a little bit smaller, a little bit more that people don't, you don't have it, you know, the six to seven cars there. If it's 36 unit, you're going to have maybe seven additional cars in the area, in the small area. Why don't they just build something different? Why don't they just go with a couple of units? Duplexes, maybe, maybe three or four instead of having 36. We add in about seven the cars to it, because each, each family is going to have one, two to three cars.
Well, we have a, we have a code that stipulates what size buildings and density is allowed in a given district, and this development meets those requirements. So we don't have a basis on which to say, hey, you got to put two units or two stories in instead of three stories, as long as the density meets the code. We don't have a, an ability to, to determine what a developer can do with his property as long as he meets the code.
I understand that, but I also understand that it's not, it's one street. That's all it is. It's one street, one way in. I mean, you know, you add in seven the cars, you add cars to the area. No, what are the people's going to put their cars? It sounds good, it looks good on papers, absolutely looks good on papers, but what are you going to put seven the cars in the small area?
That's part of the market.
Can I buy a look into it, please?
That's it?
The site plan was advised to provide additional parking.
There is additional parking.
So it's already been addressed.
It, it has been addressed. How many more additional spaces were added? 18 over the previous?
Since we discussed it the last time, there are 18 additional parking spots that have been added that were not there when we looked at this previously.
But you still, okay, but what's going to happen on the street? You're still going to have a 70-hour cars additional in traffic going in and out of that street, just one street, one entrance, one way out.
Mr. Chairman, I think the question is about the trips. We don't have-
This is a sift issue for the people.
The density of the street.
Yeah, so the trip, the trip volume that's created by the development, we don't have a code that says you, you have to stop developing on this street because there's too many trips occurring. We don't really have that as a rule or law of the city, and the use and enjoyment of that public street is there for the, the citizen and developers that have property along that street have the right to develop. Obviously, I'm not an attorney, but if we were start denying things based on, we think it's a little too busy, or we think that we just want this to be a quieter neighborhood, which I, I really understand the argument that's being made. I think it, I feel it. I, I, I feel the, the passion, I understand it, but we legally don't have that right. There, every time a development occurs, there are, there are pluses and minuses that are, that are occurring, you know, more places for people to live, more tax space, more traffic, more neighbors. Put those on the ledger how you will, but tho- those are effective of the development. I don't have a code, I don't have a law, and I don't think one exists in, in our, in our industry that says this is enough trips and we don't want anymore. And I, but I, I understand the, the compassion, and I see the problem, and like I said this last time, if we were going to build a new subdivision today, we wouldn't build it this way, but the subdivision was permitted, based on the code of the city at the time was permitted, and those landowners get to live by that law.
They have a right to develop on the property in the road density or not, it's not a constraint.
Yep, and the code that was in place that allowed the subdivision to get built the way it was, was the law of the land then, and we have our law now that says how dense it can be, and they're, they're meeting that, and they're exceeding our parking. The externalities are there, pluses and minuses, if you, if you will, but for the city to say But for the city to say this land is no longer developable because we think the traffic's too high is not.
We don't have that latitude.
We don't have a legal basis to say no.
And I think furthermore, if an individual is going to develop a piece of property, there's an economics to it, and that economics says that for this person to do this and be successful with it, this is the result that needs to, needs to occur. And I think we can't be getting into a discussion with a property owner to determine how they need to develop in order to make it a successful development.
Yeah.
It's not our role to tell them that.
We can't be designers and reviewers.
Right.
And developers.
And developers, yes, sir.
So you're, the pain you're feeling is, is real, but we don't have a solution to fix that. We can't add another entrance through other people's private property. There's no way to get to State Street, and the, the developer who buy or the property has a fundamental right to develop property on the street so long as it meets the code, and this one exceeds the parking requirements for the code. So although you've got a valid concern, there's no legal basis on which to change anything that's being proposed based on what you're discussing.
I am really concerned about safety. This is more of a safety issue. When you start adding them many cars to a street where there's no in and out, this one way in and out, some things could be changed for the better. I understand the code, but I understand also that some of the codes are changed, and it's been changed in the past for the better. I mean, we just can't sit and say, it's okay, they got the right to develop whatever they want to develop in there because that's the code. But sometimes we have to look at the people's safety also. We have to look at some stuff, and some things could be changed for the better. It's always a better solution, always is a better solution. No matter how we look at it, it's always a good solution for stuff, always. I understand the economic. I'm not against development by all the means. I'm for all the development. I'm for progress, 100%, but safety is involved, and should be looking to it. It should, excuse me.
Would it be safe to say, though, if there was an adjustment in the code to address?
It should be looking to it.
The individuals' needs and desires? That would really only apply to any property that is not currently developed.
Right.
You can't make a change during the process of, of a site development.
This is one of those decisions where you are acting as a judge, and you are applying the facts to the law. The law is in place.
As it exists today.
As it exists today. And, and, and we're all very sympathetic to the very eloquent words that, that you've, that you've given here, but unfortunately, we, this is, this is, this site plan is complying with our code as it sits today. And we're trying to do, we, you know, get as much parking as possible and working with the developer, but, but that's, that's the situation that, that the city is dealing with at this point.
I apologize if I say this, but I feel like that we are getting crushed by the developers and the upper elite people. I apologize for that, but I had to make that comment.
I don't know.
Absolutely. It's a lot of pain when the people get hurt, lots and lots of pain. We get hurt from the government, and we get hurt from the developers. Yes, and I appreciate that you listened to me. I have no, I apologize if I went a little bit too far.
No, you did fine. Appreciate your comments. Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Ann Grove, and I live at 3795 Creek Hill Drive. Hopefully, you will accept a comment from somebody who is a renter, not a property owner. You're hearing from someone else who is very concerned about the density there. I have a front row seat to all of this because my apartment and my deck are right out watching all this goes by. So I watch it, I hear, I hear the vehicles struggle already with some of the roads. Granted, there is good space around some of the other condos, but this is a lot to put in there. I realize it's probably too late for me to, to say that. I did not realize that there was a process that was going on earlier. I missed it, saw the sign today. This is a really creative use of a funky little lot there to get a whole lot of property in there, and I'm sure you are delighted at the thoughts of how much more property tax that will bring in. But as someone living in the area who is there in part because it's across from the creek, it has the nice woodlands, and I never expected as much traffic as there was, I just find that you're not, I'm not hearing any creative thinking here in how to solve the problem. Have you talked to the businesses on State Street? Whether any of them would sell you a portion of their lot? Some of those businesses, I don't believe, are very active right now. Have you looked at getting an easement, if a city can even get an easement, for there to be another out from there? Have you talked to the developer who did the other ones out near the creek to see if any place to put, make it a through circle? It is a problem. I was there when we had the ratio go through, and a tree went down between where I live and the condos that blocked it off. Now thankfully, your teams of responders responded very quickly to make a pass through so that an ambulance could make it and a fire truck could make it through, and I appreciate that. It certainly makes it abundantly clear that what you're saying is just an inconvenience for us, and hooray for having more development, is not necessarily in the long-term best interests of everybody. And I'm also concerned when I hear you talking about not having to worry about water quality if something isn't navigatable. Again, you're going to add a lot more hard surface area. I guess I don't even know if you guys are addressing how to keep that water clean there. I know what the amount of trash is in the area, unfortunately. I don't even know that you've addressed it to make sure not, we're not going to be draining off a lot more icky water into the stream nearby and down to the other streets. And I, I hope that you'll keep in mind that quality of life is not just for us, but it's for the next generation that will buy the homes, the condos there and rent apartments in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. And yes, there is a water detention component. It's in the southwest corner of that development that will catch and hold water and release it at an appropriate rate, so that, that is addressed. And, you know, it'd be great if the city had unlimited funds, they could go out and buy an extra right-of-way or easement everywhere in town. We, we needed one. That's just not, not functional. We just, we don't have the ability to do that, unfortunately, so. But appreciate your comments. Anyone else in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope. All right, we'll come back to the commission then.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 23-036, subject to staff recommendations.
Second. Hey, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 23-036, subject to staff recommendations. Any further discussion on the motion or the second? Nope. Okay, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign? Okay, thank you. 23-036 is recommended for approval. And just for a note, for Frank and Ann and those others, this is a recommendation that goes to the city council. So you've got another opportunity. There'd be three readings, Mark? Two?
Site development, there'll be just one reading.
One reading. There'll be one reading at the city council meeting. They are the final decision-makers, we're the recommenders. So that goes to the city council, and when would that be?
You would have that in, first of, July, the first meeting in July. Now that's going to be on July 5th.
5th, I think.
July 5th, that would come in front of the city council.
Thank you very much. I just hope that the committee takes into consideration to have another street there, please, and I apologize again.
No, you're fine. We appreciate your input. You weren't out of line at all.
Thank you, sir.
No, thanks for coming.
Mr. Chairman, that will be a committee of the whole meeting. It'll be, that's where the deliberation on the site plan will occur.
Committee of the whole?
Yeah, that's prior to the city council meeting.
But they're all on the same day.
Yeah, it'll be the same day.
Same night, okay.
Prior on 6:30. You have to keep posted to see when that is.
All right, great. All right. Greg?
Our next case is an ordinance amendment to Title 11, Zoning Regulations, Chapter 4, Non-DCA Table. We've had an inconsistency in our table where we've permitted primary and secondary education to be in A2, R1, R2, R3, R4, and R5 residential districts, and then in C2 and C3 zoning districts. And we wanted to get that inconsistency taken care of. Under the previous zoning ordinance that went from 1971 to 2017, in that C1 classification, a music school, dance school, and childcare and preschool were permitted. For some reason, primary education and secondary education were not included, but they are included in more intense and less intense zoning districts. So we wanted to clean it up. We are asking that this body take a look at what we are proposing, and this is the ordinance form that will effectively take the table and add these two, as you can see in the red here, these two permitted uses in the C1 district up here, to be incorporated into that use table so that we have more consistency in regards to the zoning ordinance in looking at the facilities, the educational facilities within the city of Bettendorf. And that is in keeping with our comp plan. When we look at goal F, the comprehensive plan is to promote cultural and recreational activity. Of course, education is a big part of that. So we want to, we believe that follows through with the comprehensive plan in this regard. We recommend approval of the ordinance change. I would ask, are there any questions?
Thank you, Greg. Mark, anything to add? Pretty straightforward.
Just kind of a, kind of a mistake. You know, if you think of the scale from agriculture all the way up to what was the highest, 1C3, and somehow.
Why wouldn't it be there, right?
It was in all the As, all the Rs, but then one little piece got missed. Probably, but we wanted to bring it to your attention.
All right, so I have to open a public hearing on this one, correct? So this is procedurally a little different than what we do for the other cases. I need to open a public hearing, and I need to ask if there has been proof of publication.
Yes.
Okay, we have proof of publication. Do we have any public comment with regard to this proposed change? No public comment noted. I will close the public hearing. Discussion by the commission. Pretty much a layup. Okay. Commission action. I would take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case 23-037.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve case 23-037 text amendment. Can I have a roll call on the motion, please?
Gibson?
Yes.
Papler? Yes. Satterfield?
Yes.
Stoltenberg?
Yes.
Winland?
Yes. Okay, thank you. We have recommended that for approval. All right, Greg?
Mr. Chairman, our, our next case involves 2211 Grant Street, and it's a site development plan in some regards. It's mainly for a building renovation. It's located right here. You've got 23rd Street right here, and this is Grant. This is the locale. It's the former library that was established in 1959 by the city, and that's what the location is. It's currently zoned C1 neighborhood commercial district. As a result of this zoning, the applicant got a special use permit for a bar and outdoor service through the Board of Adjustment, so that procedure has already been taken care of. Surrounding different types of zoning, you pretty much have C3 down here, C1 straddling this site. We have R2 here in the community center, and then we have R4 surrounding these different areas. The land use is pretty much all urban high intensity throughout. We do have scatterings here of UMI where the R4 areas are, and then we have ULI, urban light intensity, where the community center is because that is the zoning class, it is R2. Look at this. This area here is a portion of Lot 43, PS Gilroy's addition, plus additional ground to the west that was acquired and added to this site. The total acreage of the site is .58 acres. Proposal essentially is to redo the interior to create a bar and then an outdoor service area of approximately 700 square feet. The interior here, the service area is 2,900. Full square footage of the building is 5,483. Proposal is for vehicles to pretty much come in from the northeast and then come down and then navigate their way through, use the alley to also then come up here and then exit onto Grant. But there's also access through the alleyway to this locale. There are also, essentially, all utilities on site are going to be the responsibility of the developer to maintain. This is an elevation showing you what this would look like if you're approaching from the east and heading west on Grant. And this will give you an idea of the interior layout, the area in blue is customer service along with this orange area, the remaining here are service areas for the customers. The onsite photos show this is where the outdoor service area will go. This is looking back east. This is Grant Street right here, and this is a means of exit right here. And then looking here is the approach. You come in, parking will be along this area here on the east side, parking here on the south, and then further parking on the west. Now, there's a component to this regarding parking, and this body can make a recommendation to the city council. It's part of the downtown master plan overlay district. In ordinance 11137, this body can make a decision to lessen the parking requirement. 50 square feet is all one needs to require parking space for a bar. And given the nature of what we have here, there is approximately 70 parking spaces that would be required for this type establishment. This body can lower that amount to 35. And also, at the deliberation of the special use permit, the city was willing to offer more parking in the parking lot that serves the Bettendorf Community Center. So giving that all in total, it's part of the recommendation, the Planning and Zoning Commission can make the recommendation to the city council that they may waive or modify the requirements specified here. Ultimately, that is up to the city council to do so, but this body can make that recommendation. And we are asking, not just for the site plan approval, but also that the reduction be made. There are currently 32 spaces provided onsite. There are numerous other spaces available across the street. We're only looking at a difference of three, essentially, and the city council has the power to make that adjustment. And considering city staff has already offered that space to make it available, staff would recommend approval of both the accommodation for the lessening of the parking requirement onsite as well as for the site development plan approval. I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Greg. Mark, anything else to add from your perspective since publication?
I think Greg highlighted the points really, really well. I would just emphasize the downtown master plan, which is mentioned in your staff report, highlights this area. It's in what we call the East Bridge District. It actually highlights this building in particular as a potential redevelopment building as being highly redevelopable. It's an old city library, hence the name, the library. And, you know, having it sit vacant is, is not great, and having it developed and be brought to prosperous use really does meet, meet both our comprehensive plan goal but also our downtown master plan, which is another planning document of the city. So we're really aligning a lot of things here. I think the adjacent parking is, is a no-brainer. It's right across the street. It's city-controlled parking. We want people to use it. They would be offsetting hours. Our community center is not open late at night. Bars are open later at night, and there is a pre-existing special use permit for the bar with outdoor service area, no music until all the residential lots have transferred into some other use. So just a lot of, a lot of things have come into alignment for this project, and we'll look for your support.
All right, thank you. Comments and questions from the commission?
I have several.
Please.
Mark, you mentioned no outdoor music until there's a change in the residential area. How, how is that area defined?
Yeah, I believe the order says the adjacent users, when the, when the residential users are no longer there, when that residential use is gone, and the adjacent is defined by the properties directly bordering and directly across the street.
Okay, so the townhouses that are farther to the west, are they part of this?
They're not? I don't think so.
It's, I know there's some duplexes across the street, and they are part of that consideration.
Yep.
And then on the corner, farther to the east, is that part of the consideration?
No. No, it's everything that would be directly abutting, and then we count the road front edge as directly abutting.
And, and none of the property on State Street has upstairs apartments? And none of the property on State Street has upstairs apartments or any residential usage?
That I can't say. I don't think so, but I don't think we have an upstairs, like, a live-work scenario until you get maybe a little farther.
So there's really only two buildings that are affected by that?
Yeah.
Okay. And so, changing the subject to parking, if I go a little bit further down the street to the west, the city has a parking facility that is very accessible to the surrounding businesses, and there are restaurants and bars there. But that city lot sits right on the corner. It's very visible. It's very well identified. It's very accessible from several different ways. If I look at the community center, if I'm not familiar with that area, that parking is not visible at all. And there is a lot of parking there. But there's, it's not clearly defined. It's, it's not immediately adjacent. It's not easily accessible. I think if I were to walk from the library to that parking lot, I could follow a sidewalk, but I would be most apt to walk in the street. So I, I see that as a topic for discussion, but I see it as something that probably needs more discussion in a way to make it more visible, more identifiable.
So if I may, I'm reminded of, of just, what was it, was a week ago, two weeks ago maybe now, the city provided parking at the Public Works Building for, of a temporary nature, but provided public parking because there was a big event. Was it the city birthday party? What was that what it was? At the Tanglewood. Now, that's a much longer distance from the Public Works Building to the Tanglewood, but they did put up temporary signage. So I think the city could allow temporary and or permanent signage as long as it meets our downtown code, and we're kind of picky about signs downtown, so I don't want to go too far here. But we could probably apply some signage.
Because it is city property, and if you look at the lot up on the corner by K&amp;K, that's very clearly defined. There's a very nice sign there.
Yeah. The other thing I would add is that, in, in reality, what we're trying to do is to create a downtown where people park and walk around it. So the idea of somebody parking even at the farther lot and then walking to, you know, a similar business as this, spending some time there and then walking down to this business and then walking back and meeting friends, is that's actually what we're trying to create. So, no offense, I don't necessarily want everyone to park just the business they go to and, and only go to that business. What we're trying to create downtown is, is a walkable area that, that circulates pedestrians. This is a piece of that. To your point, it's not fully solved, that whole route, and that's what the downtown master plan is working to do, but I don't know how to do it all at once, so I gotta do it a bite at a time.
So if I'm, I'm looking at the community center, which is going to continue as a city resource and an asset, and part of that is parking, which is a valuable resource downtown, then to me it makes sense to identify that parking in a way that it's visible to people for this business or other community events that happen downtown.
And that's something I can share with our downtown business organization as well because they may be able to help with kind of creating that, because we would like that parking not only to support this business but any other businesses that may locate downtown.
Sure. Yeah.
And to bootstrap on that a little bit, it's been a while since I've gone in the parking lot, but my recollection was, and maybe it's gotten better, that it's kind of dark and a little uneven and other things, so a, a little improvement there, both in lighting and maybe surface and everything. Because I'm with you, and it'll work better certainly in July when it's, you know, still light out at 7:30 than it will in January when it's snowy and slippery and, and dark. But I, I like the idea of directing, helping direct people to it. I would, are you done with your comments, by the way? Yeah, so, and I would support all sorts, that this is an area and it's on the, kind of on the fringe or the eastern side of where we've been trying to pull things together. So it'll help start something here, and then it helps pull things together. So I, I love the concept of it, but the functionality, I think the practicality of it needs to be addressed a little more, you know?
I think we can be helpful with that.
I would agree with all of those comments. My number one major concern is somebody getting hit running across Grant Street.
Right.
Now, having said that, the reality is, if I'm going down there, and I'm, I'm sure I'm not alone, I am going to find a place to park as close to there as I can. If one of these other businesses doesn't happen to be open, I'm probably going to park in their parking lot unless they have a sign that says...
Violators will be towed.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm likely to maybe park in the street in front of the community center and walk across, which again is crossing Grant Street. But I think we have to be realistic about all of this. So with that in mind, as part of figuring this out, is there going to be a place in that area where we're going to put some paint on Grant Street, where we're going to make it a crosswalk?
pedestrian crossing.
Again, not that the average person is going to make sure they go to the crosswalk, but, so we've made it much clearer that those traveling on the one-way know, hey, this is a crosswalk, there's paint there.
So we have similar situations. If you're familiar with Bulldog Arms and Harley Correns, two longtime Bettendorf establishments, they're on the same street basically, and, and they have parking right in front and right across.
Exactly.
Traffic. People go back and forth. The city, to my knowledge, has not striked that or indicated, you know, crosswalks besides at the corners. I'm giving my engineer a little bit of time to put the thoughts together.
Can I add something?
That would be the only location. We would encourage it would be at an intersection.
Right. See, that's a little different though, what you're describing, because that parking lot is literally right there. It's visible, and everyone knows that's where you park.
We, we did have, we had a study done, and I'd, I'd have to pull it up, but it was part of our Healthy Hometown Initiative to, to start looking at some improvements. Nothing's funded quite yet, but to try to fund some pedestrian improvements along Grant and State. One thing that was discussed was the use of more bumpouts. Like, you have quite a bit on State. You don't really have, I think, you know, maybe one intersection on Grant that has those that then narrows the crossing distance for pedestrians. There would be good locations of paint. Those would all have to happen at an intersection. We would never, especially on Grant, the state wouldn't allow us to put a mid-block crossing, but intersection ones could definitely be looked at.
So you could do something at the 20th Street intersection?
22nd, which is the one by the community center. Yep.
But I don't, is, is there a sidewalk there? A north-south sidewalk?
There, there is on the east side of 22nd Street.
Okay.
Yep. It's right up against the curb, so if you're looking at an aerial, it kind of looks like street, but there is sidewalk there.
Others in the commission.
Absolutely.
Lynn, anything from you online?
Well, first let me say that I love the project and the building, the concept. I love it. I don't, and I have no trouble saying yes to the project and whatever we need to do with that, but I'm really uncomfortable waiving the parking and encouraging people to park at the community center without, I mean, it's just, I used to work for a guy who always said, you can't outstupid people, right? We can, we can mark it up, we can point them in the right direction, we can make it easy, and there are still people that are going to walk on Grant Street to get across to a really great place and back and forth to the car. I think it'll be very successful. I think we're asking for trouble by lowering the, the, changing the requirements on parking and encouraging parking across Grant Street, and it only takes one. And so I've got, you know, a safety concern, much like the last, well, like the last case, the safety concern on one, only one way in, one way out. We can't do anything about that. But in this case, we can do something about that. This is in our power to address the safety concern here.
And the safety factor may be increased, not so much heading to the place but leaving the place after they've had a few drinks, so. But I, I think the lighting, the direction, again, conceptually, I would agree with you. I think I love the idea, but making it as practical a solution for the parking as possible.
People will still do what they're going to do.
Say that again, Mark?
So if it, if this were not the downtown overlay district, if this were just in a normal commercial area where you could build a big parking lot, they would need 70 spaces. In the downtown overlay district, you're allowed to cut that number in half to 35. They're almost at 35. They're at 32. And we're, and, and staff position is 32 is almost 35, and you got three spots across the way. At their busiest day, if they need it, they're not always 100% busy. People are going to try and park as close as possible whenever they can. They're not always 100% full lot, so I just, I want to be careful that we aren't denying it and requiring full parking because that, I don't think is the intent or staff's recommendation.
Do we have a feel for what the capacity is of the facility?
We do. We have an interior image. I think Greg can show you again.
It looks pretty...
So wouldn't the reality be that we only have half of the parking spaces available when they're going to be their busiest because of code?
Yep.
And that busiest time is probably at night?
Yeah.
When the other businesses in the area are not open? So is there any, how do, how do I say this? Cooperation with the other businesses so that there isn't no parking signs?
Can I ask one thing, though, too?
Yeah, so there's something in code called a special location plan. Another way to meet parking requirements is to work with adjacent business owners or adjacent lots that you may own and, you know, have lease agreements, crossozements, and create a parking scenario kind of on the fly. And we've seen this done, I think, recently. Shops of Woodlands, I think, did that, if you recall. So maybe at Stouts or something like that. So that's another option. Again, I think we're talking about the same option. I don't know where exactly that would be. One of the places that would make sense would be the community center, again, across the street, but for, for, for a factor of, of what, less than 2%, what is 3 out of 35? You know, I feel like we're there.
Is, is there, there's no street parking on the left side as you're going down Grant, but there is on the right, correct?
I think that's right.
I have to think about that.
So there's going to be street parking, three spaces minimally across the road without having to go behind the community center?
Right, correct.
There's parking in front of it.
Yeah, I think so. And there's on-street parking on the side street, too. The north-south streets.
I would, I would agree with, with the assessment that three spots is a pretty minimal adjustment, and if we have street parking, that's right there anyway. It seems to me like the, the spaces behind the community center are just an additional, additional capacity concern that, that really, no, if I were going down there, I'd be looking on the street. I wouldn't be looking to go behind the community center, is what I'm trying to say.
And I wasn't, I wasn't referring to those three spots difference. I'm more referring to the busy nights.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if, if people can park on, on that side of Grant Street so they're not having to cross Grant Street, that's, that helps with the safety. And I, I get that there's a very big lot up there, which, by the way, on a busy night would have to have cars there anyway, because, again, you're looking at 33 or 35 spots, they've got to go somewhere, and you can't just park those in front of the community center.
Yeah. You know, I'm trying to imagine a, a downtown of Bettendorf where we have another birthday party, let's say, in five years, and we have people parked at the community center, we have people parked at new parking lot, we have people parked at the individual businesses, and they're walking and moving back and forth. I think this project is part of that vision.
All right. Any further comments from the commission?
I have one more. I, I always respect the recommendations of the staff because you work on these projects for a long time before we ever see them. I'm not recalling too many times when we've had a rule that dictates parking, and we've said it's okay to make an exception. And I'm a little bit concerned from a precedent standpoint about how that could impact us down the road with somebody else, and...
And there's, there's one big one that I can think of, and it was in the downtown area. It was the Bridges Lofts.
And wasn't that predicated on parking that would become available in the future once, after the bridge was completed and land was given back to the city?
That was the hope, but at that point, we did not even own that property. We actually had to go to auction and buy the piece of ground that ultimately got built for the 15th Street parking lot there. But that was one. That, that was an example that was allowed because of the...
And we used the 50% rule.
Yep. And through the downtown master plan or the downtown overlay, excuse me, that was allowed.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, and when, when you say that, it was one, one point when Mark was talking about, and directionally, the same concern, so when you got the 70, half of that's 35 and we're close with 32. 32, still not 35, so how do we deal with that gap? Is that gap traversable by city council some way? Is that what I'm hearing? Or, I've, I've never heard close is good enough versus if it's 35 is half, then we still need 35. Are we...
Yeah. Just give me one second. I want to refresh my mind as I look over the staff report because I think we addressed that issue in the staff report.
I, I guess my point is, I don't want to make a decision tonight based upon what we're looking at tonight and then be sorry for it later, not because of this request but somebody else's request.
Well, we can't, we can't say to somebody else, you need 35 and he says, I got 32. Well, wait a minute. So as long as that's, we've got a, a viable course to that, I'm, I'm still interested.
It, it seems to me, though, in this case, we've got existing conditions that limit. If we had a brand-new building that we actually had the space for it, we would clearly have an expectation that they meet the parking requirement. But in this case, we've got an existing building, we're trying to develop it, and with all existing conditions, you have limitations on what you can do. And it just so happens that, I don't know when, when this was, was the public library put in in 1950s?
59, they said, yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't know if there was a difference in code that said that they could have fewer spaces, but they clearly aren't meeting our code, and you can't create more land on this property that would allow you to have more spaces. So the only way that you could accommodate this is to reduce the amount of seating area in the building, which affects the viability of it for the, for the potential operator or have an exception to the, to the, to the ordinance. And I think the exception to the ordinance is the, is the most reasonable way of going.
And the exception to the ordinance, in my opinion, is a special location plan, which is a, a special location parking plan, which we, we brought to this committee before. If it's your preference that we formalize that and bring you a application that, that says, here's our site development planning, here's our special location plan for parking, staff can, can work with the applicant to do that, and I, I understand that. Just to talk, let's just get the code out of the way. Code allows a reduction of parking by 50%. That's what's allowed in code. If you can't get there after that, the special location plan is one route, or an architect might help them reduce their service area, interior service area, which would reduce their counts. So that's another route. So I think the special location plan is, is in effect on the table. That's what we're saying as staff. We're giving you a special location plan. We're admitting we don't get to the 50% rule. We get darn close. I'm 48% or something, but I'm not getting you all the way there. So if, if, if we need to call this a special location plan, which is really what it is, and the special location plan is the community center, staff is here, is ready to represent that as a special location plan for your consideration.
I think, I think that's the way it needs to go, because I'm uncomfortable with saying we're close, because we don't, we don't play, we're close in code. We call, here's the code.
Yeah, so maybe it should be a special location plan, and that's, again, that, that is what we're representing as the city.
Yeah.
We would, we would be willing to have this presented as a special location plan. I think we can do that here tonight and, and make a ruling on the site development plan and make a ruling or make a recommendation on the site development plan and make a ruling on the special location plan, which exists in code. You're right. 32 ain't 35. I understand.
And that's a door we shouldn't open. I think Anne's right.
Yeah. So, but if you, you don't open that door, in my opinion, because you, the door remains closed for the next person that comes by that doesn't have a willing partner for a special location parking plan, where this applicant does.
If you guys look at the ordinance that I've got posted up here, when you go into the second paragraph at the very end, the sentence says, "The developer must submit a parking plan to the community development director that includes provisions for improved parking, meeting all city design requirements, meeting at least 50% of the required parking." It does not say that that parking has to be on the same lot of record. User safety, including lighting and site security... User safety, including lighting and site security, the required number of ADA parking stalls per code, adequate site drainage, safe vehicle access to. End egress from the parking lot. And then a parking operations plan, including methods to eliminate any impacts to adjacent or nearby properties. There's nothing in there that says that those thirty-two spaces have to be on that same lot of record.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Or thirty-five, but there are thirty-two in present, yes.
For the audience, really.
I, the things that I would want to see. As. Uh, part of this moving forward. Is. The clear identification of the special location plan. So when that goes to city council, that's clearly spelled out. But also addressing the issue of lighting. Because the community center is not typically used in the evening. I mean, I haven't been there at night for a long time, but. My sense is there's one pole in the middle of the lot with one little light.
My recollection is, well, pretty dark back there.
Following what Greg just read to us, if it is going to be. Shared parking or a special location plan that the city is responsible for, then I think the lighting needs to be addressed and I think the signage needs to be addressed. And to me, that package then. Checks the boxes a lot better than where we're at right now. I, I just look at it as a improvement process to make this work.
Would it be possible for, um. Maybe Chris can help answer that. What I'm trying to get is, I don't want to give a no here today because I, the vibe I'm getting is this is not, this is not about giving a no.
I'm happy to make a motion that includes that as, as an amendment to the.
So not a, not a, not a tabling, but a, a motion that requires that.
Subject to.
Those are the things.
A condition of your recommendation.
If you're, if, I mean, these are all on the city, so the city staff is willing to.
I think those are.
Well, actually, the solution could be three spaces. We, we were just looking at the Google Earth street view and I'm, I'm, I think it's still the current use, but the bath. Place next door, they probably close at five. This place gets busy at five. They could probably pick up three, um, spots right next door. Um, potentially. I'm just saying bathrooms and kitchens. If, that's in immediate proximity right there. So maybe that's a solution. However you get to it, it's fine.
I, I just, yeah, I, I just want to follow the rules.
We do too.
Yeah, so, and I think, I, I think we all do. And so I think what Mark is saying is that we have a special parking plan or special parking location plan. With the city as a partner and we can, as a condition to the, the commission's approval, make sure that things such as, including lighting and signage. And those sorts of issues are addressed prior to council taking action because that would be a condition to your approval.
You said that very well, Chris.
Better than us, yeah.
That's, that, that is my motion.
He's the lawyer.
That's right.
That's different from law school and planning school.
Can I jump in for a minute?
Please.
I've been to neither law school nor planning school. But I've spent a fair amount of time in bars and, um. I haven't heard anybody address how we keep people from crossing Grand Street. Even though, and I respect what everyone's saying, is on your busiest night, chances are they won't, you won't even use that space, but it only takes one. And it only takes one person. Maybe we've had a couple of drinks, they're gonna take the shortcut. And I haven't heard how we prevent and keep that crossing safe. Other than just assuming people will do the right thing.
So Lynn, if I could add to that, I, I think a perfect example, I, I totally understand the, the concern. This, that situation would be no different than our parking lot that we were just lauding at Eighteenth Street. Where you have people using that from sports fans running across that street every day and probably ten times more people do that.
Twenty yards to the corner where there's a pedestrian crossing.
Yeah, we, we've built ADA ramps there. We do have that one striped and people continue to just run across Grant. It, it's not something that we can prevent.
Or purgatory.
Yep, same thing.
So we aren't putting ourselves at risk. We change this. We encourage parking across the way. We give her all the resources we're able to it. We're, we're not culpable then and when somebody gets hit, is what you're saying.
I, I don't believe that we, we have places where people are. Legally supposed to cross the street. Um, we can't force, I mean, people speed, people break the law. And it just because, uh, people do that doesn't make us liable. There are places that they should cross the street. And so I, I, and, and we already know how people act, but we aren't the insurers of, of that. We, we have reasonable. Rules that we put in place and reasonable. And, and, and I think if, just because we think people might do that, doesn't mean that, that the city would be liable for that. So. I, I think we. Yeah, I, I think that's really the, the situation.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
I haven't looked at the audience yet. There's still six of you or seven out there. Anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? You've all waited so patiently back there. You've got. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm, uh, let's see if this works. I'm Andrew Dasso with Streamline Architects. Um. I think, uh, all your concerns are, um, valid regarding parking. Um. What I, I do, I, I don't think has been mentioned is that, uh, there is a kitchen planned. So this whole space would be more of like a restaurant, bar and grill, um, use. So. In, in those, uh, cases, you know, it. When we go to design a restaurant, we look for, um, we look at the code for parking, but we also look at. Other, uh, rules of thumb. So ten per thousand is a, is a rule thumb that we use. Um, ten per. Ten, uh, ten cars per thousand or, uh, square feet of dining space. We also know that, like. Successful businesses drive more parking. So, um, when we did the Tanglewood, you know, they went and added eighty more stalls three months later. So. Because of the need. So I, um, hate to see a restaurant or a bar going to a, a building that may have not been used, uh, or designed for. That, uh, as the original intent, but, uh, could be really cool and good use for the library. So. Um, we also have the developer here and, um, uh, Josh with, uh, Bulldog Arms. But that's all I have to add.
Well, give us a little more insight, any of you that are out there, on, on how you're seeing it work. If, if we got to thirty-five, um, is that, how's that work for you? Concerns we've addressed about people going back and forth across the street. I mean, they'd sue you too, kind of thing. So tell, tell us where you're coming from.
Thank you all so very much. You guys have a very complicated job and I'm, I'm, I'm barely even understanding a fraction of it. So thank you for your patience and. I appreciate the intricacies of all of this. To, just to, to regover- cover some ground that's already been covered, our present business right now is on, on State Street and, uh, Eighteenth. Uh, and there is a huge amount of movement in spite of being two, uh, two corner crossing areas with, with, uh, buttons, et cetera, et cetera. There is a huge amount of movement that, that occurs. And again, to, to second the person that, that mentioned it about, uh, uh. Sports fans and the parking across that street. That too happens. A, a, as far as the volume of people that we are considering, um, our business tends to be fairly steady with certain peaks during certain hours in the evening. But. We, we don't have this giant descent and I'm not planning on, on, on anything new in our, our, our thought process necessarily. That would add to or reduce that sort of constant flow rather than just a giant peak where, where we would be. Uh, requiring every single parking spot available. I'm not saying that that won't happen, but. In the business plan that we have already been, uh, working with for three years right now, right on the corner here, with very, very little parking. And, 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 and what we would like to believe is a, is a relatively successful, um, bar. We haven't had too much compromise from that. We've, we've worked within that. I, I might've gone off topic. Is, is, uh, would you have any questions for me, um, with regards to how, how we would operate?
So on that ratio, I don't have any detail on your plan that shows your, your seating and everything. So the architect, Andrew, had referenced, um. Ten, um, spaces per thousand square feet. So where does that fall in in your current ratio? So if you've got, how much seating area?
I believe we only have twenty-five hundred.
Twelve hundred.
Is that not correct, sir? Uh, in, in, in regards to actual seating.
That's a building.
That's the blue.
Yeah, and, and the, the deck also would be a phase two part. We're, we're, we're seeking, uh, that to be part of this discussion, but it would also be. As, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm trying to work within my budget as well. Um, so, so the deck probably won't happen, although I, I will have permission for, God willing.
That's not happening.
Permission for it. Um, but as, as, uh. Like I said, I believe we have twenty-five hundred usable feet for the public.
Including the deck, is that correct, Andrew?
Uh, including the deck. So I think that, that is twenty, uh, for my math, that would be twenty-five parking spots.
Yeah.
But I don't know that to be true.
I'm seeing the one diagram where he's got open up there on the board. It says interior patron space, twenty-nine hundred square feet.
In that case, I, I apologize. In that case, that's.
Okay, so, but, but on that ratio, you're talking about thirty, rounding it off, thirty spaces would typically accommodate what you're experiencing. We gotta get to thirty.
But you didn't count that.
I didn't count the deck.
But he's saying that the deck though is a future feature, correct?
But I believe that's.
Mark, hang on for a second, we're getting Mark.
I believe that's part of that twenty-nine hundred square feet. So I believe that has been.
No, it hasn't.
That's twenty-nine plus seven hundred.
Oh, I beg your pardon. In that case, I'm completely wrong.
Thirty-six.
Apologize.
So one thing that occurs.
I do that a lot.
That's okay. Uh, one thing that occurs to me, Mr. Chairman, is that. If you, if you take the, the patio out of the equation, the deck patio out of the equation, which. We as, as city staff, we really like because we're trying to create this downtown atmosphere.
Sure.
But if you take that out of the equation, they're at about thirty parking spaces and they've got about thirty-two. Perhaps a, an approval could be made to, to allow the site development plan to go forward. Without the deck until the parking is sorted out because obviously parking is something we need to work on our downtown. Um, we're happy to work on it as staff. We think we have lots of ideas going back and forth with each right now. But we also don't want to hold up a business that's gonna, gonna get operational and rejuvenate a long, empty storefront. So, uh, I might offer the commission to think about, um, an approval for a site development plan. But not approving, um, that to include the, the patio and then that patio come back as a site development plan addition or modification. And, and that come back to you for your review and we address the parking then.
I think it also depends on what the owner thinks of that.
Yeah.
I understand that.
And if I, if I may add to. I, I don't have, I don't have the, I don't have anything on paper that would say what I'm about to say, but as far as my general understanding, I've been in this business for thirty years now. Generally, you wouldn't get an outflow being on the patio. It would be a choice. So I don't necessarily believe the patio, although it does add. More spaces and more, more available. I don't necessarily think that that creates more business. Volume for me. Recognized by the number of seats on bums. I mean, bums on seats, forgive me, bottoms. You know what I mean? Yeah, forgive, forgive my.
That's a new measure that I hadn't heard before.
I do run a bar, so you'll have to excuse my, my terminology. It's a little remedial. But, um, but as far as I, a- as far as I've witnessed through my time. It's not that people end up on the deck because the inside is overwhelmed. It's generally a choice during those times where people are making those decisions. That would normally be perfectly capable and comfortable being accommodated within that building. That now they have a, a space that they can, they can move that outside and then come back in if it gets chilly or if the rain comes in. I, I, I don't have that on, in, you know, any studies or anything that reference that. It's just. An observation that I believe that most of us can attest to, even at Tanglewood, which, which has a much fa- larger footprint business-wise than, than I would. God willing, be blessed enough to have that. But as it sits right now, even they, they don't. It's not necessarily an outflow. These are people that could be accommodated within the, the four walls of the building that then. Might choose to step outside for, for those reasons.
So just for, for perspective for us, as we're looking at two potential, I'm hearing two potential ways we can look at addressing this. One would be. Sorry, that we would approve it conditionally, subject to an acceptable, um, parking. We called it a parking special location plan. Or we could approve it, look at reproving it without the deck on it. If you had a choice between those two.
I would prefer, prefer to have the, the, the deck included and using the city's cooperation and their generosity to, uh, accommodate us through the special. Is a special permit, special.
Okay.
Event, special event permit or what, what, what. That, that would be my first choice. Thank you for offering one, but.
Yeah, no, I.
I'm grateful. We live in this amazing nation where a man like me gets a choice on that, but that would be my choice.
Well, you can probably sense, um, that there's a, a desire to help make this happen with some existing constraints that we have to obviously operate within. And if we can get away that long-term best suits it and the city can make that happen in the time period that needs to make it all work, uh, I'm, I'm fine with that approach, so.
And if, if the city needed lead time to make that happen as far as, uh, for that part of it to be in compliance, I'd be fine with it if we could get that approved. To, to my, uh, you know, obviously I'm, I'm asking kind of, um, but, but if that would be possible and we would wait for the deck to be built. For a later, you know, for, for the city to be able to catch up with their, the, 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 the illustrated points that you, you have all made this evening. I, that would completely fall within my understandings. I don't know what Ben.
Ben is the owner. Yeah, so I'm Ben. You're what? I'm the owner, the developer. So we've been working with Ace Auto. If this addresses a parking. If you've driven by our spot, you've seen Ace, is there cars in our parking lot, all packed up. I've talked to him. He needed spots. He would give us three of his after five o'clock, any, any, any time we wanted. Um, we've been very helpful. He's been great. I don't think the three parts spots, if he wanted, if you guys wanted ten, he would give us ten after hours all day long.
That's the kind of deal I need to make.
That's exactly what I was looking for.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely. That would, won't be a problem.
Can we create an easement?
Yeah, so a cross easement. A cross parking agreement. We've used cross easements or leases.
Yeah.
Zero cost leases, you could just have an agreement that has no dollar amount to it, but you say for this amount of time, I'll share my parking space with you if you share yours with me. All those things can be put into a special location plan. How you get there is not described. It's just that you have to get there.
So that's another. Another thing to add to when this goes to city council that just makes it that much easier to keep it moving forward. And that's not, that's not really a city task. That's an owner task.
Yeah, absolutely.
That, that won't be. And to second Ben, I don't think that will be, be an issue. I have a long relationship with the gentleman that he's speaking about. And he and Ben have been working together for, for a long, long time now where Ben has, has allowed him the use of that property. Pretty exclusively, I would say, um, and continuously during his business hours. I don't see that being a problem. To, to reflect it back at us after his business is closed.
Yeah.
So just, this just made me think of one question. Is it your intention for your, the library to be open during the lunch hour or only in the evening?
So ma'am, um, currently right now, the business that, the, the building that we operate out of right now, the Bulldog Arms, we're open from noon to two AM.
Okay.
That, that is the current, uh, list of things. Um, I. I, I'm not. The restaurant part of it is to be decided as far as that, that business is ours. I definitely know it will be open in the afternoon for evening service. I don't know if the, the, the area would necessarily demand that we were open for lunch. We don't do a lunch business where I'm at right now. And even when I was, uh, sweating profusely in the, in the kitchen, open for lunch. I didn't serve very much of that. Um, uh, so if you can get that ugly thought out of your heads while you approve that.
I'm still trying to deal with the buns on the bench kind of thing, but it's okay. I'm still trying to deal with the buns on the bench kind of thing, but it's okay.
So like I said, you might notice that English is not my second language. At least American English. I like the Queen's English.
All right, so are we at a point where we can make a motion?
I think so.
I think we can.
Anne, you got a grant for this?
I think so.
Let's do it.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I would like to move for the approval of case 23-040, the site development plan for 2211 Grant Street, with the following amendments. Is that the right word, Chris?
Condition.
Conditions. One, that the special location plan be articulated by the city and included in this moving forward, this case moving forward. Two, that the city address, evaluate, and address any lighting issues that are needed in the community center parking lot on the north side of the building for safety.
And then can I pause, and to meet the requirements that Greg had noted, and what he read essentially about the safety and...
Anything related to safety as articulated in the code, right. And then finally, that the city address the area of signage to direct people to that resource, if we're going to use the community center parking lot as a city parking resource, that there be appropriate signage to identify that. And it would be great if it looked just like that sign at the corner of Grant and 18th Street.
Okay, that's our motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, good, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 23-040, subject to staff recommendations and the additional qualification conditions noted by Anne. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Okay, thank you. Case 23-040 is recommended, subject to staff recommendations and the additional conditions. All right, so that would bring us to commission update.
Yep, so we have a meeting coming up on the comprehensive plan. I've been teasing it. It'll be on July 17th. It's going to be at the waterfront, probably a 5:30 start time. 5:36, we're still kind of working that out. We usually have committee of the whole on that Monday night, and then on Tuesday night, we have city council. What I think the administration wants to do is just have the work session and do committee of the whole and city council on Tuesday, so that's why I'm not quite sure on the start time. I may have to do committee of the whole beforehand, or I may not. But we're leaning towards not having to do that, so we're going to feed you, keep you captive in the waterfront. It's a public meeting, although there's no participation. There is public viewing, if you want to view the meeting. And we'll go over the comp plan, where we're at now on our update, R D G.
All right, anything else for the good of the order?
I'm sorry, if I may, just thank you guys for your hard work. Like I said, this is a hugely complex job you guys have. Thank you from a citizen's point of view. We appreciate it very, very much.
Downtown a better place to be, so yeah, thanks, appreciate it.
We look forward to a long relationship and good standing with you guys. Thank you all very, very much.
We'll be in and check it out. All right, all those in favor, adjourned, say aye. We're adjourned.